So does Tom.
Brenda?
Brenda, you want to start the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Charlie walks in. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't stay.
You're really taking that leading the pledge seriously.
I am, but that's how you're supposed to say it. That's the only place there's commas.
It's the best part of the meeting.
Need a lesson in that.
It's always the best part of the meeting. Everybody agrees.
On the pledge?
On the pledge. In the meeting. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the attendance.
Uh, Craig is on there?
Yep, right there. Oh, you got me.
Yeah, we do.
It's like I knew what I was doing.
Uh, Craig Scott.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Charles Wiltie. Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Jenny Davis. Roger, you passed your first test. You heard me say your name, Cameron.
Just my timing.
Yes.
Timing everything.
Okay, um, look at the agenda.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
I haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Oh, okay.
Somebody can second it and then we can have a discussion.
Okay.
I said.
A second in any discussion. What is it? What is this job description status? What does that mean?
Uh, we'll talk about that when we talk about uh, goals for the term and I have a list of job descriptions in there that are completed and a list of the job descriptions that are not completed. And that's a task that we've been wanting to accomplish for at least three years.
For all the county employees.
Right.
Has the union had a chance to look at these job descriptions?
The ones that are approved or have. That's a process, um, but uh, so we've got progress that we are in consultation.
Post nine o'clock.
No, eight thirty.
It's on.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, on favor, accepting the agenda as written. Say aye.
Aye.
Any public comment? On the agenda items? Any comments? No comment?
I, I need a second here. I apologize. I think Jenny thought it was nine o'clock.
Except your apology to, oh.
Thought the meeting was nine. I talked to her at nine.
I don't do it myself.
Very irresponsible of me. I apologize, you guys.
Do you, you think she's?
I don't have her number.
Thank you, bye. Oh, I'm, I'm more positive. I talked to her a couple days ago and.
It's under a text.
Really?
I don't know why my brain just stuck.
Well, I can, but you have it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Where she is, she's thinking nine o'clock and just like, I apologize to you guys. Terrible.
Charlie.
We only accept apologies three times.
It's annoying.
I guess I'm fast now. That's embarrassing.
Okay, nice thing up is our discussion, but I would like to hold off a few minutes because I think all the commissioners should be involved in the after discussion and we know Jenny's coming.
Hello, you coming to the meeting? I'm sitting at the meeting. Fine.
Everybody but you. Don't let me hang out like this, Jenny.
Brenda's around. It started at eight thirty. I asked last night too. Okay, well, we're here. You should ask me.
She's being recorded.
She can hear you. You can't hear her because she's in there.
Roger puts his phone on air from remote.
Good day.
Okay.
I will.
Just telling you.
No ringer.
Well, when mom calls.
Huh?
Well, when mom calls, great.
Five, you don't sit while I don't turn it off. I just haven't got it off. No, yeah, I'm using it all right around your side.
Search and rescue team, the volunteers and.
That early.
Them. She just keep, yeah, so I'm not sure what it's all about.
My mom gets up at five thirty and she's in Reno.
Sure.
She's still, she'll call me around eight thirty in the morning. They're going to bake it. I'm sitting here, I'm like, all right, now, bye.
Yeah, it's just fun for that team and it looks like small purchases, education and training. In this case, yeah, in this case, it's wants to break free of uh, female money that he gets because it's so restrictive. And for those, he does have to come here for every little purchase. And his argument is if I had ARPA money, I could just follow the board's policies and I don't have.
I used to go on the board every time I had a sponsor test.
If I had ARPA money, I could buy a new car.
Four, five years, I don't.
We bought several.
I know.
And I used.
Everybody wants ARPA money.
Right. Get all souped up and get lights on it and radios.
Charlie would like to be your partner for the kids' golf outing.
So, these are the.
Fundraiser for the kids' club.
Isn't like a scramble, like a four person scramble? How we find out will be ARPA money, not the ARPA money, but.
We don't have.
May twelfth and Friday.
Could buy a scanner.
Excuse me, what'd you just say?
Test.
Again, again, I've seen that in the other.
Other than one.
Approved.
The person who gets the team together.
Anything.
Show up.
Want to do at the jail is going to be covered. You know, we have to, when we justify, we have to tie the opioids in the case. They've already had contraband that they've confiscated coming into the building. And what we want to do is not let it in, in the first place.
It was that money. Why not? I mean, it's a little strict. What you want to do, what it's for. I read it online and.
Right after. Couldn't have been because that was.
Other states sent the opioid money. And I thought we done. Number one. Everybody, you were there, not saying that. Opioid money. They all are purchased in one place, bought two. But Idaho, I mean, all these places they're buying.
Yeah, yeah.
So I remember one of that will be at one year.
We have three hundred seventy two thousand of it.
May twelfth.
And to expect, uh, let me, uh, throughout the year, we're going to get, I don't know if we're not on our quarterly or how they're going to do it, but we're going to get it from here on.
Then our, then our next.
No, because people might need to get ahold of me from my office.
Sure, whatever. They can.
Discuss that, but we're going to.
Be embarrassing.
I really would like to have that.
I could swear. At nine AM.
Oh, some of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Mayhew.
I haven't thought one for a while, not good ones, but I have a lot of.
You have a lot of.
My brothers.
Like me, mine go through a filter before they come out.
Fire in there for it.
Usually.
I'm gonna do that.
Should be safe.
He got the air handler of a friend. Turned off the air handler.
It's going down.
Oh, you're in trouble.
Oh, you're not.
Every time I went out there with a teacher, I was.
Yeah.
Sounds like you did it a few times.
Grab your ankles, sir. What that meant?
Back in the day when they used that big board.
Oh, yes. That's why I'm like him.
You know what? Not a bad thing. And I do believe that.
You can't even say anything today.
Yes.
The teachers can't even raise their voice a little bit. They can't even say anything.
Yeah, I know. This is for the record, right?
Yes, this is for the record. That's why I'm being very careful when I say.
Yeah.
Different time.
It's like eight thirty. It's a different time.
It is.
I didn't go to Catholic school.
Oh, I did.
I get you too. Second grades went on the moon and stopped and it was like regular teachers, but yeah, first grade, I was always a good kid though, but my friends, oh, they don't get, put their hands out, get the room. It scared me enough just hearing it. I'm like.
We had a teacher who.
Works for me.
Would flip his class ring around. Oh, gosh. But I tell you what, he was probably one of the best teachers that I had.
I never got it.
But other kids did.
Yeah, now schools need more security than we do.
Yeah, yeah. Did somebody reach out to you about the second amendment? All right, well, somebody's going to be.
Okay.
Fish called me the other day wanting to know if our county was the second. Do you remember when you guys voted on that? The second, second amendment.
Second amendment, so it's very.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was, it was scary still.
That was.
Yeah.
It was in twenty twenty because I remember being out on the campaign trail and blasting about it.
It was January, yes.
That was two, I see correspondence last meeting was addressing that.
Well, because there's some Roscommon County, there's people trying to fight to be able to bring guns into the courthouse.
That's a bad. I only know that because that happened in Delaware and three people died.
Happened in Isabella County and three people died.
Bad idea.
Yeah.
Well, it's not me.
Good morning.
I was literally doing nothing this morning.
Maybe you needed it.
I'm sorry.
Hello.
I'm sorry, everybody.
That's okay.
I had a conversation right about it, Mr. Wiltie. Tell me.
I was the only one that had your phone that would have your number in.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Brenda didn't have hers.
Oh, I'm cry drier than you guys. Yeah.
So where are we at?
We're here. Craig approved the agenda. Roger seconded it. We didn't like have it. And Brenda said she wanted to write three to start the.
Number four.
I gotta pull it up.
He had a public pronoun at the end. I apologize.
And, um.
We're on where? Fourth. After discussion, review current ARPA fund status.
Yeah, I stopped there and you, and you looked at the next slide next to it.
Yep.
That's where all that, where we spent all our ARPA money so far.
Okay.
Okay, you're lead on. Thank you.
I get, I apologize.
No, that's fine. I did really good. We even said the pledge briefly. They were a little behind me, but we did really well.
Our break expenditures is in commitment, so it looks like we're at one, am I looking at balance remaining? One million, seven dollars, nine hundred forty-two. Whoa.
One, that's remaining, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-one cents. Is that correct, Tim?
It is. Um, again, that's we go up to the Annex Project. Trying to find it on here. I know it's here. Uh, that's the, the two nineteen, nine forty-three. That actually includes contingency and Jack Morris has been at least by history, usually on the dime with his quotes. So probably we don't spend that much. So the actual that we end up when these projects are all finished could be a little bit more, but if you work with that number, that's a safe number.
Any questions about that, guys? Some of you that are new weren't here for some of these. Do you have any questions about this?
No.
Commissioner Wiltie, do you have any questions about it?
No, I'm not. I don't.
So let me go back. So we are in the project review fiscal year twenty twenty-two project list.
Okay, so flip over to that next uh, document. Uh, you'll see just the generalized list of all of the proposed projects from last year. Um, literally a year ago, the ones that are shaded in gray have already received funding, so they probably are no longer in play. Uh, in, in that regard, the rest of these are just again, the priority or the, the rankings, if you will, from last year. The very next document will give you a breakdown of uh, how the, the rankings were established. So, you know, commissioners rated the projects that were uh, listed and that's just the order that the, the previous one presented. But this is the greater detail and you can see in most cases, there is an approximate uh, amount, but in a lot of cases there aren't. And that's obviously problematic if we look at, um, let me pick one here. The, the bottom of that first group, uh, referee courtroom construction, uh, no idea. So if you wanted to do that project, we would want to uh, pursue some kind of an estimate so that you know what kind of money we're talking about. And then the rest of the documents under that section are new requests that have come in, uh, just in the last few months. Uh, you know, the cert equipment uh, from Mike Bowers, correction video surveillance system was on the project list from last year. But Tom received an updated quote, so you see that there did go up pretty substantially from what the estimate was last year. Yeah, we did correspondence from DHHS regarding some of their programs. Uh, Economic Development Corporation made another request and then we have the uh, background from Karen on the negative cash offset uh, that uh, you know, these are all seeking ARPA money. Uh, so that, that's where we stand. I, you know, we didn't put out a call for new projects. Um, frankly, the prior board's focus was on uh, facility needs for the county government itself and vehicles and, you know, things to uh, uh, you know, just help the county perform its services. Uh, so that's where we stand. The number of these projects, of course, the library request is still valid.
Comments? Thoughts?
What is the fair on here still?
It's what?
There wasn't there a thing that once said, you know, your money is a fair.
The fair is on the list.
Down near the bottom.
At the bottom.
Yep.
Yeah, there's has five things right at the very bottom.
And did you load these?
Yeah.
Oh, here it is here.
Well, as far as the comment goes, I'd like to hope that we would stay with not to creating on Tony.
Oh, I agree. Hundred percent.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
I just like to focus on Tony operations and Tony, uh, Tony owned the facilities and things like that. I think you should concentrate on that. We need to be talking about the catch before we really take off on any more expenses, don't we?
That's your call. I would certainly advocate for that, but that, that's your call as a board.
Do you want to come on up, Karen?
Yes, please.
Good working them.
Good morning, everyone. Karen Plaski, Ogoma County Treasurer. I've worked at this county for nearly twenty-five years this July and for nearly a decade, this county has operated with negative cash. The gift of ARPA funds is a one-time windfall for us to utilize those funds to get this county on track and finally remove that negative cash. For those of you who are having trouble understanding what negative cash means on these reports. If the general fund were in a bank account by itself and us paying general fund expenditures out of that bank account, your bank account as of yesterday, well, the twenty-ninth, would have been overdrawn four point four million. The only reason our checking account isn't overdrawn is because the list of all these special funds that you see that are not a one-on-one, we're using those funds dollars to pay general funding bills, robbing Peter to pay Paul. We've literally sat at a table with an auditor who agreed with me when I said, are we robbing Peter to pay Paul? And she agreed with me. That's not how any business should be run. We are responsible for public funds and we should be doing it in the best possible way. And operating a business with negative cash is not the way to do it. Please utilize those remaining ARPA funds to get this county on track, please. Please, I can't emphasize enough that this is not how you run a business.
What's your number then?
As of March twenty-ninth, the negative cash was four point four million.
On what? At the end of?
At the end of the fiscal year, September thirtieth, per the audit, I believe it's just short of five hundred and twenty-five thousand as of September thirtieth. You're going to have ebbs and flows in that one-on-one fund with the cycle of collection of taxes. The bills go out in July. We will, we will see funding come in for general fund. So I asked the at a minimum, you commit a half a million to a million. I would like all of the funds in there, so there's some cushion. I would like to utilize all of the remaining funds. But please help me get this checkbook operating the way a business should be run. It's balanced. Now let's get it in a positive.
At the current plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. That's what we're in right now.
Current fiscal year? Mm-hmm.
Uh, so what's your projection the number will be September thirtieth? Twenty-four.
If you do nothing.
Twenty-three.
If you, if you take no action towards this negative.
Right.
You will easily be another half a million in the hole. It will still be where you're at today.
It'll be five hundred plus five hundred?
No, it'll be five hundred plus.
Plus, it will be plus.
It will be further in the negative.
Always gained every year.
A smidge.
Right, right, right.
Please, please give it your utmost consideration, please.
So if it increases every year, even we give you the million dollars, it won't balance the budget and it will still increase every year.
Well, that will then, it will then fall on your shoulders, all of you, to consider your expenses. You heard the auditor stand in front of you and say, you have an expenditure control issue. Address this negative cash and then work on your expenditure control. It is a task incumbent upon you as commissioners.
Well, you know, you know, as, as long as you've been here and I've been here for this long. The explanation I always heard was we were revenue poor, not spending too much. And you, we're, we're not a business that can make a new product and, and, and sell a new product line and make more money. We're just not there. We're, we're fixed income. Yeah, so you can't call it a revenue problem. You know, it is a spending problem.
Expenditure.
But now, now, right now, we have the opportunity to catch back up.
Yes, which is what ARPA was intended for.
Tight now.
ARPA was intended to cover your lost revenue.
Right.
So now is the time to fix the problem. Please help me get this county on track. Give me the tools to really run a checkbook the way it should be run.
So what do you think the smidge would be for the end of twenty-three?
That is, that is a tough question.
Hundred thousand, hundred and fifty.
It depends on what you do with expenditure control. If, if expenditures are allowed to have cost overrun like they did this past year, we've got a serious problem. If expenditure control can be controlled and department heads keep a closer eye on their departments, it won't be as bad.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think.
We need to all work together.
I think Brenda can uh, agree with me that back years ago, the, the big thing was, don't worry about it. We'll balance it with the tax revolving fund. Remember that every year?
That's not how.
And that's not the way. And Bev Scott and Maggie Robinson sat right here at a budget meeting and told us how the tax revolving fund was made and what its purpose was, and it wasn't to balance the budget.
And you know, I was hired by Maggie Robinson. I was trained by Maggie Robinson. I continue to be mentored by Maggie Robinson. I have now, after two years, gotten the office back to a Maggie Robinson office. Help me fix this problem. Let's get this county on track.
Nice.
I, I'm going to disagree that ARPA money was, was utilized for lost revenue during COVID.
That's what I said.
Issue has been going on way before COVID. We already utilized two million dollars or are planning on utilizing a total of two million dollars to cover that lost revenue out of these ARPA funds.
I mean, what's, what's it here?
Five hundred for four years. Yes, five hundred thousand for four years. So we've already done that, which is a total of two million dollars.
I see one and a half million on here. I see going through twenty-three.
Down to the very bottom. You'll see there's, because we haven't adopted, obviously, our.
Oh, I see. I got it. I got it.
Greatly disappointed in with that audit and the expenditures. Um, I, I, I don't foresee this fixing the problem. And I think there's going to have to be some really tough decisions moving forward. I would like to see this money spent on other things that, that we haven't hit, like the annex building, like the state confinement treatment center, like some improvements that need to be done to this building that haven't been done.
You understand what I'm saying about an overdrawn checkbook, right?
Yes, I do, Karen.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just want to point that out. It's very important.
I've talked to numerous other uh, counties, surrounding counties in, in their ARPA funds and how they, they have spent them. And I have yet to talk to one of them that spent it on balancing their budget. So that, that's, that's my opinion. Commissioner Mayhew.
I'm new. And it sounds like it's been since they started the same problem. And, and you put a Band-Aid on it right now. You hit the nail on the head. We got to stop spending as much. And I don't foresee it happening to you.
I guess where I said it is incumbent upon the commissioners to make those decisions.
Do you, do you see it changing?
If there is expenditure control, yes, the direction and trajectory of this county will change. Yes.
You sat here. Everybody comes in, wants something.
I know. I've been here twenty-five years. I see it every month, but but I also see a historic opportunity to change the way this county financially operates.
But we'll still be in the hole.
It's not going to fix the problem, but it will certainly help the bottom line of this county's financial.
Then what do we do after, after?
Then you do expenditure control. Like Jenny said, you make the tough decisions on how to balance the budget and stay within your revenues.
Okay, you've been here for twenty-five years.
I have.
You've done a lot of budgets. And we have deleted a lot of expenditures from that budget. We have laid off a lot, a lot of people.
Yes.
A lot of people.
Yes, and we're still not there, Brenda. We still have expenditures exceeding revenue.
Well, what do you, maybe we should just lay off the people in the, in the offices and, and the elected officials run their own office without any help.
I can't do that.
I know that. No one can. I'm being sarcastic right now, but we have laid off a lot of people from all these offices.
Yes.
You know, where do you go? Lay all the rest of them off? You, you see where I'm coming from. Where do you, and, and personnel is, is every business's biggest expense.
Yes, we're in the service industry.
Isn't this, I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
I'm done. I'm just talking.
Isn't this part of this because of when we also collect, it was brought up at the uh, audit as far as how the governor has, has put everything into motion? Also of how things are collected?
Yes, that's where I said there's.
Way out of this with how we are getting this in the third quarter, second quarter or third quarter of how, or fourth, how we're collecting things.
That's where I mentioned the ebbs and flows of the money.
Correct.
So give me half a million. If we ended September thirtieth, no, no, you've helped the budget with lost revenue. This is an existing negative cash problem, two different problems. Yes, you've been supplementing ARPA funds for lost revenue, but you have not addressed this negative cash on the books.
So can you say that this year, which, which I agree the first year COVID, maybe even into the second year, that, that you can account for five hundred thou, if this hasn't been utilized to help with this problem, you can account for five hundred thousand dollars loss revenue from COVID?
From COVID, I think we've covered it.
Correct.
All right. Um, don't forget, we not only have the ARPA, but we had tariff grants early on that uh, were directed specifically at things um, that were COVID related, um, you know, sanitizing materials and so on. Um, but from my perspective, I was really waiting for that number in the audit, uh, because that's really, in my thinking, that's the real number as far as the, the cash flow issue. We hear numbers right now like four million. Well, property taxes will start coming in in July and that's why you saw that number dramatically fall, you know, in the fourth quarter. Uh, what the audit gave us was that snapshot on September thirtieth. This is where everything was. So that tells me all of our revenue has been collected for, in this case, fiscal year twelve. Uh, what the audit gave us was that snapshot on September thirtieth. This is where everything was. So that tells me all of our revenue has been collected for, in this case, fiscal year twenty-two. And by the time everything was, all the dust had settled, we were still in cash, five hundred and twenty, whatever.
The short of five twenty-five.
Uh, so that, from where I said, is the real number on the cash flow. Now, whether you use ARPA money or not is your call, but that would be the number if I was gonna focus my concentration on a number, that's the one.
As a county administrator, are you supportive of giving five hundred and twenty-five thousand to address this negative cash?
Frankly, it's not my call. I think the board knows my position on this too, that yes, I think we should have, uh, balanced cash. Um, how this problem came about, I don't know. We don't have time to go back the decades and try to figure out exactly where it happened. Uh, you know, it'd be a nice exercise maybe for a grad student someday to, to really dig into that, but from where we're, we're sitting right now, that five twenty-five will always be there. And let's say we are perfect with our budget. All of our revenues came in as budgeted, our expenditures were exactly as budgeted, that five twenty-five number will be there.
Because of when the revenues come in, correct?
It's there because of, uh, in, in the analogy, robbing Peter to pay Paul went on for so long. That the general fund never did send the money back to the other funds that it borrowed from to pay its bills. Um. Don't know why, and frankly, I'm not even interested in finding out why. It is a systemic problem that we will always have unless we can come up with the half million to, to supplement it.
Um. One other question. So the money that we get in July, does that pay for the bills for October twenty-two to September twenty-three?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're always receiving our money.
Always.
After, you know, eight, eight, nine months after we've already started paying our bills.
Right.
And that was due to our state government that that happened. So maybe we give the state government to move it back where it should be.
Yeah, Tim told you this morning, you have one point two. I'm just asking you to please consider the five hundred and twenty-five thousand written negative cash as of September thirtieth, please.
Any other, Commissioner Wiltzy, do you have anything for?
Um, I don't really have any question, Karen. I just have a statement to make. Um. Put a lot of thought into, just so I became commissioner, uh, you know, looking at numbers, realizing obviously. Um, financially, we're not in the greatest position. You know, like Tim said, there's no reason to waste time to look back in the past other than to make sure that we don't follow those types of activities, so we don't get in this position again. We do have a great opportunity right now with this ARPA money. As much as I would like to say. If our county was flush, we could use this money, you know, for a lot of different entities to try to raise more money for the county and to try to bring a lot of good. We still will have some money to do that. But this is an opportunity right now. This negative consistent cash flow is a huge, huge problem. A huge problem for any business. And as a county sustainability wise, we have an opportunity right now, as much as it sucks that we would have to use ARPA money that we'd like to use other places. It's a great opportunity right now to get this where it needs to be. And I really think that we need to think really long and hard about making a decision of putting five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of ARPA money. Get this negative cash flow situation fixed. We can't fix anything in the past, but we have an opportunity right now to make it flush, and then we have to make some serious. Strong, hard decisions moving forward, so we are more responsible with the way our expenditure control is, period. So it's a great opportunity right now. And I think we need to make the move.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. When, when we, when we dedicated the, the first half of, of ARPA, that was to take care of stuff. We, our current budget. Is close to a fund balance. Isn't it? Tim, we're pretty close to a fund balance.
Right. Um, I think we had, uh, budgeted for this year that would, it would theoretically increase. But right, we, we're kinda even.
Yeah.
Right, we're only after.
Pretty close to even. If we don't address the cash balance, because the cash balance is, is five, it's a half a million dollars off. If we don't address it, it'll just hang with us every year. We'll just never clean it up. We can clean that up now, and then what the difference will be is the smidge.
Right.
Every year, there's a little smidge. Well, if we keep, if we get. We keep on track on our budget for having a fund balance and increase our fund balance, we'll be able to absorb the smidge. Won't we, Tim, with the fund balance?
Just again, my theory, and I'm not a CPA, but my theory is if we come in. At or under budget, we shouldn't have a smidge.
Right.
That means we haven't overspent anything.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, when that happens, this is where we get into trouble. And if we, if it happens and we don't correct it right away, and it goes on for many years, that's how you end up where we are.
The past years, we didn't have a fund balance. We found that out when Department of Treasury came here and told us we ranked eighty-third in the state. For fund balance. And we all know there's only eighty-three counties. So we're famous. We're at the end.
Well, see, we're famous.
But we're coming out of it now because we made a plan. When they came here and told us that, we just, oh, well, I don't know what we're gonna do. We gotta keep spending the money. We didn't make a plan. In, in between that. Time and now, we've made a plan. And we're on that track. But we need to clean up this cash balance. At the end of the year cash balance. And like, like I agree, we stay on track like we have been. We can absorb the smidge. That can be absorbed with the fund balance and we'll be back up to where we should be. We're not that far behind. Our plan is starting to work. People don't see it daily, but you see it over, over, over time. It's working. That's putting these resolutions in place. That's taking these steps. That's working out the grand plan. Not the little tactics every, every month. Thing. And yes, I agree, Roger, they come in here asking all the time. I gotta say, and Brenda probably agree with me, they don't come in as much as they used to.
Wasn't?
The, the. The requests for more and more money. You remember when we were in that other room over there? Oh my gosh, you know, we were getting bombarded with. Uh, requests every, every day. Aaron, you were right there too.
Neither one of us worry about our toilet paper.
Well, I know.
Well, and you've referred to Maggie Robinson days. I am ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent sure if she were sitting in the chair next to me, she would tell you the same thing.
Oh, I'm sure.
Address that five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Use this one-time rainfall to fix this county.
Now. That money, that's already allocated here on this. Sheet for when it says FY. Twenty-twenty-four. Stay this year.
No, that's, that's, um, for the, the actual budget itself.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. So it's like. You're thinking about twenty-twenty-four, no, that'd be the last one, right?
Right.
You would still have funds to, to spend on other projects. One point two less than five twenty-five, you would still have a good cushion to spend on other projects.
Do we have to spend this money by a certain date on this ARPA money?
Um, when the board passed the resolution back at the beginning of twenty-two and declared it all as lost revenue, which. Was a new rule that came out from, uh, US Department of Treasury. They said if you received a million or less. That you could just classify it as one thing and move on. They do recognize the counties are smaller and even relax some of the reporting requirements for us. So we passed a resolution in, uh, I'm gonna say it's about February of, uh, uh, twenty-two that made that declaration, which. Then said we had already then allocated, uh, by the deadline, and we didn't need to do anything more. That original deadline was the end of twenty-four for allocation. But that was accomplished with that resolution a few years ahead of time.
Understand, you, you may hear a different story from a township. And I've said this before in the meetings. Township ARPA funds came through a different channel than county ARPA fund.
I know that.
Okay. Just so anybody goes to an ARPA, uh, uh, a township and they start talking about ARPA.
They got their.
Deadlines. They don't live by the same rules we do. So it's just, it's different methods. I just don't want you to. Hear something at a township meeting and think that we gotta follow the same ones. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Economic Development Corporation, I think we bypassed you guys. Come on up.
That's okay. That's us. But we're not that much hurt. Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, did I?
This one.
Where you at, Heather?
Starting the budget.
Oh.
Sorry, here. He wants this.
Thanks for the guys again.
Good to see you all.
Yeah, she's learning from money.
Bill, I knew you were here.
So sweet. All right, so. We got the floor.
Excuse me.
Um, so we are here to talk to you guys about the, um, proposal that we had sent in about ARPA funds. Um. Actually, I'm not sure how much of this you want me to speak on. You wrote the letter. But I will go over.
First of all, we recognize the. Role responsibility that you have and the decisions that you're making. We, we don't come here to, um. Try to get more than a fair share, right, to try to get more than, than, than what, um. We believe is a good investment in the county. And that's what we're talking about. It's really a good investment in the county. Um, the work of the EDC is to invest so that, um. That the business thrives and that, uh, the county really is supported on tax dollars and not just, uh. Federal dole outs and things like that. So, you know, as we, um. As we, uh, presented a proposal, it was in three parts. Uh, one was, uh, basically that, um, the operations of the EDC. Uh, the, the other was a, a, uh. To increase the size of revolving loan fund. And the third was to, to create really community, I call it block grants for projects. That we might be able to, uh, um, to. Uh, receive applications for, to evaluate and, and to, um, to disperse funds for. So, um, we, we first of all appreciate that, that you have invested in the EDC. Uh, we appreciate the participation of, of Commissioner Wiltzy on, on our EDC board and, um. And we, um, would be glad to answer any questions you have about, uh, further investment in the EDC.
Commissioner Wiltzy, do you wanna add anything?
Um, I, I spoke at our last, when I was giving reports. You know, I've. Been here a short time. I'm really enjoying spending time and getting to know how our EDC works. We had a really productive. Uh, whiteboard meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that really opened my eyes to what the EDC can do and some of the, the shortfalls that we have right now that. With, uh, just a lack of money even in our general fund of some things that we could do that could really open our eyes to, you know, not only our residents, but, you know, people outside the county that would. Thinking about maybe entertaining, bringing in a business or what have you here. So I think the EDC is extremely important. Um, I think we got a real good start. I think we're very fortunate to have. Um, you know, both of the people here today in front of us, um. And I think just even with a little bit of money, even just for operations alone, um, could really go a long ways, um, for the EDC.
Questions for the EDC? Commissioner Smith?
No.
Mr. Mayhem? Commissioner Scott?
Tim, what's our direct connection with EDC? The county's direct connect? Just a, a board seat?
I think there's one board seat per commissioner. I, I don't.
We're, we have a contract with the county.
Right, and every.
We have a contract.
Right, every, uh, uh. Person that's appointed to the board, uh, is appointed through the board this year. Uh, so that's, that's a pretty strong connection there. And yes, we have, uh, worked into the budget, uh, and allocation each year for EDC for the last two years. It's been thirty-five thousand. Prior to that, it's, it was hit and miss. Uh, some, some years there would be allocation, some years there wouldn't. Uh, but at least you're on board now with that solid thirty-five thousand. It's sort of programmed into the, um. The initial spreadsheet that I put together for the budget.
Yeah, so by contract, they are a, an arm of the county.
I think they are considered a component unit, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and yeah, we have a contract that really does spell out our expectations, and some of those are pretty general, promoting business, you know. But that's, that's what those monies are intended for, so that's why we, we spell them out.
And the contract is basically what is expected, not structured.
Right, it, it's literally saying this is what the money are going for.
They really are a component of the county.
Right.
That's what I, that's what I wanna know.
And this year, we allocated thirty-five thousand dollars for them?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
So where is your number now?
Twenty-five.
Would you like twenty-five more?
Um, our ask in this letter was seventy-five, but it was broke out into three various.
Can. I just wanted to hear. I just wanna hear the auction.
I have twenty-five.
Gotcha.
Individual EDC operations, EDC community tourism grant, and twenty-five for the revolving loan fund, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for the time. Thank you.
Tim, do we need to go back and cover the certification equipment? I mean, it was. You guys need to. I guess we kind of, I apologize, kind of up there.
Well, um. As far as going in order, I mean, do we want to talk about that project list anymore, or? Is there, since there's new people since we made that list?
Well, this is all part of monies here too that we're talking about. So why don't we go forward and then we'll go backwards. Why don't we talk about this certification equipment? Do you want, do you have the floor, Tim?
I can just, you know, pretty much brief what's in the, the memo from, uh. Mike Bowers. Mike is, um. Not able to be here, um, being.
Had knee surgery.
Okay, I wasn't gonna say that, but, um, right, that's, he's in recovery. Um, what he's asking for here is just some support through ARPA. To help with, um, CERT team. Now, CERT, remember, is the local citizen volunteer group that, that helps, uh. Maybe it's a rescue that, that needs to happen or some kind of a search, uh, that goes on. And this is a, a group of volunteers that he's put together that are ready to respond. What Mike is faced with when it comes to the homeland security monies that, that are available to him, uh, he can certainly put some of that into CERT, but. Every time he has an invoice, uh, that needs to be paid, he has to come to the board regardless of what our policy says and get a resolution to approve that. So if he has a fifty-dollar purchase, he has to come here and get a resolution and go through all of that process before he can actually spend the money. What he's asking for here and the number that I, uh, keep seeing in, in the memo is two thousand dollars or maybe five hundred dollars, but a fairly small amount. That he would utilize. Under the rules of our current, uh, purchasing procedures policy, which means if it's a purchase that's under fifteen hundred dollars, he as the. Director of Emergency Management would be authorized to, to make that decision and make the purchase without having to come through a committee, the whole meeting, and then a board meeting with a resolution. Uh, and then, uh, filing, uh, additional paperwork with the federal government, uh, to do with his grant. So this would help him to be more efficient. Working with the CERT group in a nutshell. Uh, and if he were here, I'm sure he could list off a number of ideas that he already has in mind.
Isn't this CERT the one that he was combining with three other surrounding? Counties to spend the monies that were available?
Um, that's actually the federal monies that they're, they're combining to spend, but, um, this, this group is. Kind of our, our third, if you will, of those three counties that he's working with. So it, uh, intended clearly to be for Yorgomah County group. I don't know enough about the project to know just how much they're blended with the other two counties on a, you know. Day-to-day basis.
Yeah, I can talk on that. I'm actually a CERT member. Guys probably don't know that, but, uh. So we really had our first, uh, meeting back in, uh, November. And we do have a strong, it's not a very large group right now, but we've got a, a strong, small group of people that are helping get this involved. And, uh, you know, we obviously never wanna have a. Natural disaster or any type of large emergencies, but we know it can obviously happen. Um, and I've said this before to you guys, you know, having Mike Bowers alone is. Very beneficial for our county. Mike is a very talented man, knows a lot of people, does a lot of great things with grants. So anyways, back to CERT, um, it's right now a small group of people. We'd have an accident, um. We can basically come to follow up between. The fire department, the local, the police departments, and all we're there to do is to assist in any way possible. Um, but yet also there's some, also really cool things that we're doing, like for example, this coming Saturday in Mills Township. The CERT group along with a few other CERT members from other counties. CERT, I believe, is almost involved in almost. No, in lower Michigan, a good majority of every county. But this Saturday, we're meeting in Mills Township, and we have a, a large window. And people can show up and they can sign up for smoke detectors. So people that sign up for smoke detectors, um, will get their address. And the following Saturday, we have people coming, mainly our CERT members. That will go to that address, the house, and we'll actually install the smoke detectors for them. So it's more than just emergency management, natural disaster stuff. Uh, we have a trailer that was just donated, um, and Mike does have grants for that, but, uh. There's a bunch of volunteering to help build the trailer that we'd have a little command station to help back up. Uh, the local enforcement, EMS fire. Um, so it's a, it's a really cool group, just getting started. But again, we got some, some strong people and I really see. But again, we got some, some strong people, and I really see it's going to have to stay up. And with Mike being quarterback, we're going to be able to have sustainability there, so.
Questions, Commissioner Simmons?
We had just talked about managing our expenditures. So far, we've had somebody come up with seventy five thousand dollars they would like to have just to make it better. And this is to make it more convenient for cert. Is it worth having them go through the process and getting the money from the federal government versus giving up our money? If we're supposed to control our expenditures and there's another avenue that they can get money? Why, I don't understand why, why we would if there is another avenue, even if those would make it much more convenient, and I understand that. But when you're in dire straits and you're at a negative, why would we give more money? This is my question, why would we give more money if we're in dire straits and and trying to, our cash, our cash amount here to make it better? So, so far, we've already had, you know, one that won seventy five thousand, and that was even so good. Now we got cert wants money, and how many more? Everybody comes to the table wants money. If we're supposed to manage our expenditures, how are we going to do that?
This isn't budget money. This is ARPA money.
I understand.
Commissioner Manhia, do you have anything?
Not on this, but the other one, Mr. Scott said that we are getting better. We, we are on a plan. So how much better are we now than we were, say, when you first was elected?
When I was first elected, we were probably, Karen, you can't tell me out. We were probably seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand in the, in, in the red. I can tell you that it was at one time, the, the tax revolving fund, which last month, last week's meeting, or the other day's meeting, called it the, what was the term on it? It wasn't tax revolving fund, it was tax something other fund.
Umbrella fund.
Umbrella fund. That would gain about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And there was a, there was a motion made to make that part of the revenue stream coming in every year instead of an over, uh, uh, instead of the increase of, of interest. And I was totally against that because once you put that in the revenue stream, we're going to spend it. And that's how it was going. You, you know, he, you're, Brenda's nodding. She, she remembers. She remembers. We were going, we were going over budget at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and with no end in sight. I, I think when I came on board, it was about four hundred, four hundred thousand. And when we had a big shift in commissioners, and I will tell you, when we hired Tim as a, as an administrator, we turned the whole tables around by setting up a plan. And that's, that's what changed it. We set a plan.
We also had millages that we didn't have then.
We did.
Some of the other entities are their own entity now that all helped. So a lot of things have changed over a period of time.
Yeah, the road patrol.
We stay with this, how long before we're going to be, if we did nothing? How long would it take us to be?
Back in that rut if we did nothing?
Back to being out of debt. We stand on a plan.
Oh, another year.
We have some, as you've probably seen during the audit, there's definitely some expenditures that need to take trace.
I know, but I mean, we, we stayed to the plan.
We won't.
I know.
No, not with those expenditures that was given to us, we won't.
Another year isn't going to pay our, our problem or negative.
No, no, no.
Another year we should.
If we don't, if we don't do anything with the cash flow issue, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll take quite a while because we'll have to, we'll have to pay that cash flow over a number of years, but it's gaining all the time. Now, if we take care of that now and stay on track, I would say within two years, we should have a fund balance at the end of the year. Tim?
I would add that when we talk about the tax umbrella fund, a couple of years ago, you passed a resolution that said we're going to phase out of that. So over a four-year period, at the end of the fourth year, we don't want to be having that allocation come in automatically to the budget every year. Now, it's there if it's necessary, but, you know, it has other purposes too, just in terms of making sure our locals are, are whole and everything else. But we are on track. Twenty twenty four will be the last year where you'll see that as a part of our line in the budget going in as a revenue. Twenty twenty five rolls, that will be zero. And we're still on track for that one. Appreciate this here's comment that nothing ever goes as planned, and that's, that's very true. But that one, we, we've stuck, stuck to, and we're very committed to making sure that when the twenty five budget is here, you'll see nothing coming over from that umbrella fund. That, that's a tremendous step forward and, you know, good, good work on the board's part of taking leadership and making sure that happens.
Without utilizing another five hundred thousand, correct? With what you said.
Without utilizing, this is like nothing more coming in from that tax umbrella fund, right?
I guess we kind of went backwards here. Did anybody else have anything to say on this cert equipment? I mean, I don't think we need to make any decisions yet, but this is on our iPads. We can look at it if you have any further questions.
Let me know if there's any questions as well.
Perfect. Item two, corrections, video surveillance system update quote.
So that's a new quote. This is a project that's already on the list, and for last year it was estimated to be at a hundred sixty thousand. And Tom just asked for an updated quote because it's spending a year. This year's quote is two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred. So it's a project that's already there, but a significantly higher estimate on the cost.
Tom's not available to talk to us about this.
Tom is maybe listening in right now and maybe could talk if he wanted to.
Just come up, use the upper level.
Tom, did you have anything to add?
I do, actually. I just want to make the board aware that that does not include any of the wiring. That would have to be contracted out. I don't have a number on that. We'd have to put it out for bid, but that's just for the equipment and the install. That is not what the replacing all the existing wiring that's there.
This is for the detention center, correct?
Correct. It's all the cameras at the correctional facility.
All of the corrections facilities. This isn't mandated, correct? This is just, is this update, is this new, is this?
We've already got cameras in place. Obviously, they're, they're not the greatest quality. Some of them have failed. They're analog. It's just newer technology. There's also additional cameras in spots where there's no coverage in the jail right now. So those have been added in.
So is this just for the corrections center? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Correct.
Okay. So this is on their wish list?
Correct.
Do you see any other way to get these funds for, for this?
Um, no, I'm not the money guy.
I mean, Grant, I'm thinking grant opportunities.
That's what I was headed.
I would hope that corrections personnel would already have investigated that before they came here, but I can't speak to it. I, I would hope they would have done that, though.
Is this something you feel we're going to have to get? It's just a matter of time?
It's just a matter of time. It's, the equipment's going to keep failing. The, the cameras are going to keep quitting. There, the, all the video is recorded, and it has retention on it, obviously. And it's, it's not going to last forever.
Do you have any idea of what we're spending right now on repairs to the current equipment?
I don't. We have a maintenance contract with them, but I actually don't know the cost on that. I could look it up.
Can you?
Yep.
So, Tom, are you spending a lot of time over there consistently, working on maintenance and fixing issues over there?
Not with the camera system, and it's not just a camera system, by the way. This is the door control system as well. So when somebody comes in the lobby, you know, somebody up in control trick door. I've had a probably five or six instances over there where, you know, something went wrong with the doors, and I've called the vendor, and they've been, they've helped me out quite a bit.
Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to see that cost of what we're spending on maintenance of these items.
Commissioner Scott?
It's kind of a maintenance issue, but, you know, you got to weigh out how long. Yeah, I, I don't know. It, just wait for more information.
Commissioner Simmons?
I don't know how.
Commissioner Manhia? Thanks, guys.
It's gone up considerably, though.
More information to come. Item, thanks, Tom. Item three, DHHS Emergency Housing Holding, Household Goods and Foster Parent Recruitment Retention.
This is a request from the State Department of Health and Human Services. Hopefully you caught that emphasis. Three worthy activities with emergency housing, household goods, and foster parent recruitment and retention. Couple of things. Number one, I just want to emphasize once again, this is the state department asking for county ARPA allocation. We annually fund DHHS at five thousand dollars for their activities in Ogama County. And each year that I've been here, we've had a resolution come forward stating that they had not spent that five thousand dollars and would like to use the balance for home heating or other worthy type projects. So you just would put that out to you. Already out to be five thousand a year. It's not spent every year. In fact, there's always, you know, surplus of funds that are allocated. Again, very worthy programs, but this is a state department asking for county dollars. A state that already has quite a, a fund balance in its ARPA right now.
They should tell DNR and get it out of the trust fund that's about five hundred million dollars. Jeez. You know, every year, like you say, this comes up, and I voted no the last two years. Not to, oh, well, not to have, take that money and spend it. And here they're telling us, you need more money, and you don't, and they don't spend what they got. They just want more money. They don't spend what they got, and they, they want more money.
Question, Commissioner Simmons?
This is coming from the state. I mean, the state has a big, big fund balance, and that's why our taxes are going to go down this year because they exceeded what they should have as money left over. So why doesn't state go ask the state to get this money rather than taking us to the pole folk down here?
Commissioner Manhia? Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
No.
Okay.
I'm on this committee, but I, yeah, I agree with what, what you guys.
Well, did you guys want to pop up here? Come on up.
Yeah, we got something exciting to talk about.
Actually, we do. Y'all are sitting there all nice and quiet. Come on up.
We sat up for two seconds.
Please.
We have a rock and pony show. Yes, we're not saying who's the dog, but he's the pony. It's gonna be the most fun of your morning.
My goodness.
Maybe the whole darn day. We could use it. Rain wasn't helping us today. I'm the pony.
Looked good for your ankle.
She's just fine.
All right, give me two seconds. I got.
You're good, you're good. Your guard coming in actually let us borrow her Ogama County Herald because they have a huge article on what we're talking about.
Oh, they do such a great job.
They do a fine job, so.
That's a sphinx, or, yeah, I didn't see that last week, so it must be the sphinx.
I think she said March thirtieth, yes. She let us take it right out from her chair, practically.
All right, sorry, I just didn't give her a lot of choice, but we say, can we borrow this? We got a million. We're, we got a project that we're super, super excited about that will actually bring people to our community, our community, to spend money in our community so that we can do fun stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, you're good.
Late forty minutes, so you're.
All right.
Well, we can see you have lots of important things going on. I am a county retiree. I worked here in the building for over ten years. I worked in building zoning for a while, was the chief deputy county clerk, circuit court clerk. So I'm familiar. I told her, I said, I know right where we're going. I've been there before. I've been up there, taken minutes, all that good stuff, so. I'm familiar with the process.
I'm Heather with West Branch Chamber and the West Branch Visitors Bureau. I am putting on the West Branch Visitors Bureau to, today. And we are super, it's like we're ecstatic. I woke up this morning and so excited to come show you what we got going on. We are the first, actually, first I'm going to start off with. What our project is called is the ORB GeoTour. O R B GeoTour stands for Ogama Ross Common GeoTour. It's geocaching. Anybody been geocaching?
Yeah.
Yay. It's an amazing project. It's a collaboration between two counties, Ogama and Ross Common, who are the first to actually collaborate and do this project in the state. So we are very excited about this. So basically, it's geocaching. It's taking thirty geocaches, fifteen in Ogama County, fifteen in Ross Common County, spreading them out, showcasing our best tourist attractions in our counties and highlighting them, and people will get a passport. So I'm going to start off, yeah, we'll, we'll start off with a passport. So this is, this is the path, what the pass, this is, whoa, this is a draft. This is a, this is a draft. Draft version of it. Okay, so what geocaching is, you're going to get a passport, and you're going to go and go to each of these geocaches, and you're going to get coordinates. What's that?
Another one of these.
Yeah, you can take one of them. Okay.
Oh, you will, you will.
You will. That's why we're here.
Geocaching one-on-one.
This is new technology.
So you get a passport, and you'll go to each of these, you get coordinates, and you download the app, and then you'll be able to go to each of these locations and get the code. And then after you've completed the code, you will get a trackable geo coin. This is a heavy metal. Yeah, we're past those, we can take it. Oh, wait, let's, let's. You can see both sides. They get a trackable geo coin, and these are very popular. People collect them. Ah, and in the geocaching world.
Thousands and thousands of people around the world do this. With their families, with their friends, it's a big.
Hundreds.
It's hundreds of thousands.
Yes, yeah. So our project is, like I said, it's through two counties. So this is kind of our map. This is a rough draft of our geo cash map because we have to get approval for each of these locations. We can't just go say, hey, I want one at Irons Park. And actually, we couldn't even have a geo cash at Irons Park because there's too many other geo cash sites there. We actually had to think outside the box and go, I can't tell you all the locations. So I'm going to pass this around. These are pending geocaching, just so you can see it's spread throughout the entire.
Are allowed and no writing down possible areas. These are not vital areas.
Yes, yes, so anyways. And then we'll, we're.
Not that we don't trust you. Obviously, we need to not trust. She can probably tell us how this works.
So with this geocaching, we have also spent, it's, our project is about twenty five thousand dollars. We're spending about twenty five thousand dollars. The coins are three thousand one hundred program, five thousand five hundred. We had to actually be part of this program. We're spending approximately sixteen thousand dollars in billboards this year. This is one year. We're committed to two years, so this will be a twenty five thousand dollar project this year. We'll have to do the same thing again next year. But we are so passionate about this project and what we're doing with it. We are just excited and we're committed to it. So we are right making rat cards, which are getting approved with the commodity code to go out to our welcome centers right now. Um, we're in, we're in the paper this week, but I also am going to give you a press release that tells you all about the project. I know you guys are going to get stuff.
Yes, I'm very used to getting stuff.
Yeah.
Board packets are always fun.
And we're, the billboards are going out, going up next week. So we've got some billboard, some of our billboards, so you'll be seeing them throughout the state. And again, we're spending sixteen thousand on billboards. Then we bought geocash boxes. Now, these are special geocash boxes because we've utilized the kids in our community, both Ogama or West Branch Rose City Schools. We do, when we're Prescott schools, we have some of the churches, and they all painted these boxes. So we've used all the kids to help us come up with ideas.
We have, how many of them?
Fifteen of them. Well, how many? Fifteen of them, yeah. And I'm going to pass this around, but here's some of the kids that have, have been part of this project. So we're doing a kickoff, and it'll be on May twentieth, and you're actually going to be able to get a geo. So we're doing a kickoff and it'll be on May twentieth. And you're actually gonna be able to get a geocaching one-on-one at the beginning of our kickoff.
We expect all of you to be there so you'll know what we're talking about.
We're gonna have a ribbon cutting and we're gonna have a breakfast. And then people will be able to just go. And, um, the Houghton Lake is gonna end it on the Sunday. So we're gonna do Saturday the twentieth and Sunday the twenty-first. So Saturday the twentieth, you'll have, we'll have the kickoff with the breakfast. Sunday the twenty-first, we'll be in, um, Houghton Lake with an ending celebration.
But we're not, and they're not ending the geocaching, it's ending the kickoff.
Just the kickoff.
Kickoff, yeah, we'll go on.
This is a project that people can do year round. So with families, all, all ages. And so, um, this is a year on project with families, all ages. And we are just super excited. Um, another thing that we've done with advertising to do this, we've got, had an interview with the Great Getaways TV. Um, and we've just recently put up a Facebook page on it. And it'll be on our website. And then of course, we've got the rat cards, passports, GeoCoins billboard. Um, and so we put a lot of time and energy in this project so far and we're just like really excited to start, like, we get to push it out now. So, um, we are here to, uh, to show your project. Um, here we are, asking for money.
Here we go, here we go.
This is, uh.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're, you're super excited about this because if this is just regular excitement, I'd hate to see what super was.
She's always.
Well, we don't know. But I wanna show you something. On your little passports, there's a little, uh, there's a little box here. You see that little box?
Supported by.
Yeah, and we, there's a, we wanna put, we wanna.
Uh, we also might add, I do, um, marketing consulting with the Houghton Lake area too. I'm the Visitors Bureau treasurer here in West Ogama County, West Branch, and I work over with Houghton Lake too. Um, their EDC, because they use their ARPA funds differently than how we use our, our funds in Ogama County. They have funded the project in Ross, the Ross Common County's part of the project. In, in West Ross Common County, we obviously can't do that. But we could maybe do some of it through the EDC. Heather's a member of the EDC. Carol's heard the pitch last week, I think it was or something. Um, so, you know, we, we want to make you aware of the good things that are happening in the community to try to draw people to the area, to try to elevate Ogama County and West Branch and all those things. So that's it, it's a marketing process that we're following. Do we need funds for it? Yes, we do. The, the Visitors Bureau is paying a portion as well as Ross Common is.
So that twenty-five thousand dollars is split between the two counties.
Right.
Our two, uh, Visitors bureaus. We are splitting that project.
And we understand just by being here and reading through the papers and everything over the last year, what's happening in our county. Um, we're taxpayers in this county. Mr. Mayhew, you're my commissioner. I'm in that little tiny part on Dahl Road, just a little bit east. That little bitty strip that's there. That's where I am. Me and about ten other neighbors. So, nice to meet you.
So we would like to open up to any questions that you may have. And I also wanted to give you guys, um, with the Visitors Bureau, we, we just put out our new fishing guide program in county. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys, um, receive a copy of that.
It talks about all the different lakes and where you can fish and what you might catch. Did you have something?
Yeah, I have some friends that do this geo stuff.
Yeah.
And, and they love it. And, um.
You guys get the coin to look at?
You go through the whole thing, you give me that.
Are you guys putting in like any like discount and stuff or anything?
Commissioner Scott, did you wanna?
We know people with geo, geo cash. I do, I do it. They, they go to other countries. I mean.
It's all everywhere.
They spend all year just going to all these different places.
These are because they're, we know where they go. We kind of know where they come from and what they do.
Put in their little.
Cause this is, um, is it my, called my Geo Tour?
Yeah, my go.
My go. They are the people who we partnered with to do that monitoring. We are doing the monitoring. We get the reports from the monitoring. So we know where people are coming from, where they're going to.
On your little passport, the my go and the Geo Tour, there's two, um, two logos on there. Those are the two that we've had to collaborate with. I mean, they've sent like professional geocachers to go out to get our locations and find and figure out how many feet is from another location.
It has to be at least two hundred feet from another location. You can't put a geocash next to another one. It has to be at least two hundred feet away. And private citizens can go out and do geocaches and put geocaches places too. So we run into that. There've been a few people where we wanted to put a cache and somebody else owns that area, I guess.
Like, that's why we couldn't go, ours park, because the person that owns that geocash would not let us put our geocash there. So. Is our area, is this, this coin specific for our area? It's for, yeah, it's for the whole Ogama County. Okay, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, it's one side.
Yeah. Area has their own.
Yes, some areas, some people don't do coins. Coins are something special that you do that
Okay.
level elevated to a new level. Because real geocachers, they've got coins they've been collecting all over the world. So we felt like if we're gonna do it, we're gonna jump in and do it and do it right.
So what are these boxes? I guess I missed something. What, how do these boxes come into play? These are, these are actually where the location spots are. Inside the box?
I know. No, they have to go.
Totally don't get it.
Okay, so, all right. So what happens is we put items inside this.
Okay.
Little trinket items.
And a log book.
And a log book. And when they come, okay, first of all, these are not setting out like this.
Okay.
They're attached by chains.
And they're gonna be in a box.
In boxes or hidden. They're hidden. It's a scavenger hunt, basically.
Okay.
So then they're gonna go in this box and they're gonna, they're supposed to put something in, like a pencil or whatever they want, and they take something out.
You'll get your code up in the box as well to plug in here. So once you go to all, we're actually saying that you have to go to at least thirteen out of the fifteen caches in each. In Ogama County? Yeah.
Thirteen.
I'm getting this, so. So you'll get a log in each of these. You have to, a code that you have to put down in there. And now. Box is gonna be in Ogama County? There'll be actually fifteen, but you have to, thirteen out of fifteen.
Have to get.
But then you have to go to Ross Common and get those too. So that's why our collaboration is so awesome because we'll have to, we're hoping people, it'll take long enough that people have to, um, stay the night.
You want to stay all night, right?
And when you get all these that you need. Then you earn.
Then, yeah.
Buried somewhere.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
No, you're gonna have to try it out when it comes out.
You guys get all that size for your caches?
Yeah, and then.
You know, they have like.
Oh, yeah.
The ones that are the size of.
So actually.
Fun to do to find them. I mean, you know, some of them are like literally like the size of a bullet is.
Yeah, well, ours are bigger.
Ours are bigger, but they might be in a different case. So you might see a, a bird in one or might have to go through. Like, there's gonna be all kinds of different, like, these are in a shell. That might be a ladybug or a bird, you know, or some. Has actually a Legos. Okay, there'll be one. I can't see what ours is gonna be. Somewhere in Ogama County.
It's a secret.
But anyways, you might see him, like this one, you might see this one that are in a.
Ross County.
You'll see this one, and actually, you have to figure out the code to get in or figure out how many colors in this to get the lock off of it to get into it.
There's all kinds of, it's like you just walk up, open it up and do.
Yeah.
First you gotta find it with the right GPS coordinates. Then you gotta figure out how to get it open. Cause it's locked somehow. It might be on the wall if there's an address and that might be the number, or who knows? We don't know exactly how.
And then they bring all of this to you and you hand them a coin. They can mail it in, they can drop it off. Oh, and then you could mail them the coin? We'll make, we'll be nailed. And that's, that's even, I wouldn't even put that expense on there, but that'll be, uh, will be postage, postage will be included too.
And the thing is, they spend all day, so they'll end up stopping on one of the restaurants to have something, maybe stay at a motel.
Go shop.
Buy gas.
Go shopping, I mean, they're.
And it's, it's for everybody, uh, any age, any time of the year. I'm seeing Ogama County.
It is cool.
Seeing, actually seeing.
Ogama County, because they're in all kinds of.
Tourist attractions. So another thing with this is that we'll be featuring different attractions, of course, with it. And, um, we will have a website on the state, um, page for this. Um, and which, it does, that doesn't go live until our geocaching kicks off. I don't know why they won't let us do it live now, but they won't do it until the day that it kicks off. And we've committed to two years, so this will be two years. Is the Ogama County EDC, uh, contributing any funds? Um, they have not committed to anything yet. So right now, who's committed to this?
And to answer that, the problem with that is the EDC literally has, uh, I think about eight hundred dollars to spend.
Which, right, they were here this morning asking for money.
That's for, yeah, that's all they have. Yeah, yeah, we spent fifty dollars for Facebook to be able to make some, you know, try to inject a little bit more. You can pay money for Facebook. And that was like a, a real big decision to spend fifty dollars.
The balance fund was quite a bit larger than that. I guess we should have asked them what their balance fund was when they were here.
It's very, very.
I think I heard him say about tourism, they've, they've, um, asked in that, what our first tourism, and I don't know whether they would put some of it towards us or not. I don't know. We, we did pitch this to the EDC to show more thing, but we are, yeah, that's where we're at.
We, what we wanted to as a group, we fully support this. It's just financially, we don't have the money to do it at this point. One thing, one thing I wanna say was real quick is, what I love about this, and I've had some time to educate myself on it because I've had this. To me already, but this is like thinking outside the box. It's, you know, it's really doing something different. Um, we definitely know our county over the last number of years, since I've been here for seven, eight years, I've seen a lot more tourist activity. And of course, the side by sides and stuff help, but a lot of people are coming up here and they're seeing what we have to offer. This is just another example. Somebody from Southern Michigan, Indiana, Ohio, come up to Ogama County, holy shit, oh, look at all these trails, excuse my language. Um, look at these trails. So now they're, they're gonna, they're gonna bring their side by sides back up here. So, you know, for me also, you know, being a small business owner up in Lupton, you know, I'm hoping there's one of these in, in area around Lupton. Um, cause there's like, we're a rec area or something. People. And then now they're gonna come to Cedar, they're gonna come to our small businesses up there, you know, people come up here, stay in hotels. I just really like this, thinking outside the box, something new. And, um, obviously we've all said, like you said, you have friends that go to other countries to do this. That's what I really like about.
Counties, I mean, obviously we're partnering with Ross Common. Is, is Aranac Giasco?
Nobody in the state.
What's the nearest tourist that is doing this? Oh. Ross Common.
The DNR, the state of Michigan through the DNR has one of their own that they do for the whole state.
The only one that's ever done this, like a collaboration with this.
Or even done it as a county. There's no other county that has done it, let alone two counties that did it together.
How did you guys get involved? If you don't mind me asking?
We. Yeah, they go outside the box.
Because there was, um, the, what was it called? It's a I can't remember what it's called, but there was, there was a, the Geo one for the.
The state, the DNR part.
That put on. And so then we decided that we wanted to try, see if we can do one, only a collaboration between us two.
What, what you're seeing is like, the friends I know, they individually went out, they did their own geocaching.
Yeah, anybody could do that.
Yeah, right. And they, they put some for other geocachers to find.
Right, yes.
Right.
Happen in one of the locations that we're at is a person who has a cache there.
Yep.
Knew we were looking in that area. He's, he wants to partner with us to, to use his cache.
Right.
Because we don't get to use it otherwise. They're very territorial.
Yeah.
Cause it's their cache.
We have our cash. What does that word?
The cache is where it is. That's the box or whatever they use.
Okay.
The fighting.
I'm picking cash. I got it, I got you. Okay, um, yeah.
I keep pointing at her, but we won't shut up long enough for this. I know.
I'm excited about this too. Uh, what, what does it take to become a sponsor to get? How much money does it take to become a sponsor to get on this pamphlet of yours?
We don't, we haven't asked anybody else.
We don't have an answer.
Can you come to us, want money and you don't know?
I know.
We know your situation too, but.
I'm talking about individuals or other, other, other entities within the county, like Griffin Beverage or whatever could be a sponsor of this.
We didn't do that. Yet. We didn't do that.
I get a lot of money.
Well, I know, um, oh, I don't have my, that makes it a lot more complex for them. We're just starting. We did, we are just starting, but we also don't have like, um, on our website and on this pamphlet, we don't have like the room, I guess, right now. Like, we want them, but how do you, uh, put five hundred logos on there? Or, um, maybe, maybe we come up with something. We haven't thought of.
We did think of it, but it's, it's a lot more of a process and it costs more. Every time you put more on there, you can't put fifty logos on a billboard and have it still say anything about West Branch or Ogama County. You know, so we have to be.
They're focusing on the county as a whole.
As a whole, right.
Can, Brenda, can I answer that too? I think we had, we had spoke a little bit at the EDC about that when you presented this. So I think what they're really trying to do is, you know, just like anything, when you start, when you build something the first time, they're focusing on trying to do it right. Get the people here and then they're gonna be able to take the results and say, hey, this is what we're able to do now. You know, have some type of level sponsorships and be able to go to businesses and stuff and say, hey.
Cause now we don't have anything to tell them.
This itself is on the county.
Is on the county.
Yeah, listing sponsors, you're taking the focus away from the county and focusing on.
Then it becomes that, not.
That's true, but sustainability wise, if this goes really well, we want to continue. In order to continue, we have to have money. So.
We do.
And we can't go into sponsors without having some information saying, oh, we've had five thousand geocachers come in the last year and a half. Or whatever. Yes, so that's why.
Right.
We can control it a little bit better this way and make sure it's run the way we want it to be.
We'll have to think about how we can, um, people that wanna sponsor, we can, um, highlight them and still like have, have their sponsorship. Maybe they just be added onto the website or maybe they, you know, Facebook page or, you know, something like that. But to be on that brochure, this is, the, the passport is a very important piece. This is what's going out to every single person. So the people on that passport right there is, it's gonna be the highest amount, I would say. But there is a spot.
Thank you very much.
There is a spot.
There is a spot.
Definitely educated me today, so I think.
Thank you.
Over your time, we have more in our three minutes worth.
Yeah, fine.
So individuals can, can donate to this cause too and.
Anybody could.
Yeah.
Be, be a sponsor.
Yeah.
Okay, we just haven't promoted that part because we wanna get this out and get it running and run through what, you know.
I understand.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty exciting.
Do we wanna go back on anything, guys, in, in item C? I think we hit everything pretty well there, didn't we? We hit that already. Item D, Evaluation and Prioritization. Tim, is that?
That's your exercise as a board. Uh, if there's anything you want to, you know, advocate for or suggest for a resolution for a future meeting. Um, despite the urgency, I think everybody has expressed, um, you don't have a clock ticking on your decision. So if you're not ready, if you wanna look into more things, or maybe there are other projects you wanna consider. Um, those are certainly all in play, but it's, it's completely up to you at this point. Uh, if there's anything you want to target and, and do.
So this takes us back to the wish list is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Sones?
I have, I have one question. If, if this five hundred twenty-five thousand is in addition to what's on this budget right here, right? So that means out of our, uh, unencumbered balance remaining, if we did that, we'd only have six hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars left.
Right, and that same formula holds true for any projects that you may wanna, uh, consider. It's that you would now have to subtract that amount from that, uh, unencumbered balance to get to your new balance.
So we have like six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars out of the ARPA money.
Out of lots.
If, if we did the five twenty-five. I just wanted to bring up to your attention.
Did anybody wanna look at that? Commissioner Scott, you had mentioned, do you wanna look at the wish list again? Do you?
Well, I just. Yeah, I, I mean, it's on our, it's on our agenda and I didn't know if.
We're back to it right now. Item D, Evaluation and Prioritization. Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
No, go ahead. Brenda's got something to add.
I do, cause I, I look at all, I look at all these items and I brought this up before and I've talked about it with Tim. When I look at this, you know, we did stuff with the annex building. It looks very nice and why don't we, you know, when you think about this building and how many lights are in here? Why don't we do LED lights in here? Why don't we fix the windows so when the windows don't blow? Why don't we look at, you know, why can't this building be a project?
Well, it is. It's number thirteen on the list there.
County building.
Project number thirteen, county building.
I think project thirteen should be moved up higher in the list.
Well.
Opinion.
Then maybe what we should do then is revise our, our priority list.
Yeah.
Like we did the first time with the other five commissioners. Uh, like we did the first time with the other five commissioners.
Yeah.
Maybe we just need to do that because it sounds.
I think that'd be a good, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, it just sounds like they have different ideas for things.
I think that'd be a good idea to, to give us a, which obviously we have a copy of this now, but to administer us, I, I think Mary did it last time, each one of us, we, we prioritize it one through, ten, I think is obviously what it was, or, um, and then came back together and reconvened, someone, someone, Mary then put together a summary of, obviously, we're looking at it, so.
And that's that next sheet there, that shows how, how we, how the votes went for the different levels, that's all. And, and, uh, the only, the only thing about this is just like my opening statement is, I hope that we'll stay, prioritizing county-owned and county-run, of things first, and we're quickly running out of money, I, I get it, but, you know, it, when the force, four million came, it sounds like four million, wow, that's gonna take us a long time, no, it doesn't take long at all, you know, we're finding that out, you know, a- and, you know, just bringing speed, that annex building, that was, we had a lot of discussion about that, a lot of discussion, you know, even to the point of, should we even own it? You know?
I bet you brought that up.
I did, I did, well, I, I mean, basically, nine-one-one was in there, they are totally separate from us. Yeah, M S U, they were the two biggest users of that building, and they are separate from us. So, you know, they're paying us rent, why don't they just pay us a payment? And we sell the darn place, or we just sell it to them for a dollar and just get that whole thing off, if we did that, they didn't assume any, any, they could have assumed any of the repairs. And we'd have another two hundred and fifty thousand to spend.
We, we'd have to increase our milledges to do that.
But, or sell cookies, I don't care.
You're talking about the past now.
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
Absolutely.
When we talked at building repairs for the annex building, yes, back in the past.
You talked about possibilities.
Oh, I, I, the idea came up, you know, well, there was a lot of ideas, I, I really wanted to move the sheriff's department there. You know, sheriff with nine-one-one, not move them out. Sheriff looked it over, uh, him and I walked the building and everything else, he has since, not made a commitment toward that, so I guess we're not doing that, so that's fine, that's fine. But anyway.
We do get paid rent over there for that. What about that, that room now, that we put in like some, uh, video, we upgraded, we're running that room for like fifty dollars, uh, meeting, is there been any rentals?
Um, one that I know of.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
The only reason I suggest that for the county building, because all, all the lights that are in here, there are a lot of lights in this building. And then maybe, you know, it would reduce our consumer's bill, sort of thing.
I would.
And I know the windows are a big project, and it would take a lot of money to do that, but maybe the lights can, can even be done. It, it's just, just a thought.
To save money.
If we want to save money, we'll use our money to save our money.
Right.
Yeah, the, the consumer's bill could be a, might be a big cut in that bill.
That's what I ask what county did with their ARPA funds, is they did some improvements to their building, boiler system, they, they did a lot of that.
And we're not high off that list right now, because a lot of this stuff has already been done. Uh, as far as corrections, transportation fleet, what you're finding, what you guys are finding out, the fund balances that carry, wh- when we did this, we didn't understand the fund balances they carried, so, you know, since we made this list and found that information out, that may not be a high priority, it's not a high priority with me anymore.
With what, what, I'm sorry?
Correct, no, not corrections, but, uh, transit, was, it's a transfer.
It's right under the land bank, one of the corrections, transportation fleet.
Oh, that corrections, I'm sorry, I said transit, but corrections, we, we felt about that fleet too, already.
It'd be nice to reevaluate this and see what we can take off of it, please do that, and then also, please add, add, yeah, kind of simplify it a touch.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe also add these ones that were brought on today, I, I think that we should rate them as well, they, they took time to come in here to talk to us. Uh, add, add these as well, along with the negative cash flow, I think should be on there as well, yes, Commissioner.
Um, so the presentation that they gave us today, you know, there, that is kind of a time-sensitive manager, um, the ladies that brought in about the Geo cashing.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's kind of a time-sensitive deal, if we, it's one thing to be on that brochure, I think that'd be great, but, I really think that what we're gonna get out of it as a county is gonna be huge, and I think it's something that's gonna, stay and continue to grow, um, so I really think that's something that we need to make a decision on sooner than later. I know they didn't give us any dollar amount, I think they'd be happy with anything, um, anywhere from two, three, four, five thousand dollars, uh, so I do support that, but, I like the idea of getting this cleaned up a little bit, you know, looking at this list, some of these things taken off, stuff that's done. Um, I agree with Commissioner Simmons, um, I would like to see, ultimately, what I would really like to see is, we know we have, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to use, and I'd like to see a lot of that, that money, if we do go ahead with trying to get rid of this, uh, negative cash flow, um, I'd like to see six hundred some thousand dollars, a good majority of that to go to, new L E D lights, things that are gonna be able to help us save money here on a county level. But I think again, and I, I know I said this strongly, I've had a lot of time to think about this, we have, an opportunity right now to get rid of this negative cash flow, and we really need to think really, really hard about this, this is an opportunity we have. We, we, we look back in the past, realize what we did wrong, we don't do it again moving forward. But we have to take this opportunity to get this cleaned up, pay off the native cash flow, make responsible, consistent decisions as county commissioners, to see that our county moves forward in a positive manner and creates sustainability for years and years to come.
You'll provide us with that list, please, thank you. Yep, go ahead.
About the presentation. I hate, I, I don't want to make it sound like I'm trying to make an end run, but they've, they've gone to make their presentation at a component unit of the, of the county, the EDC. If we fund the EDC, as they're asking for, let them go ahead, be that logo on there. I don't, you know, I think that the commissioners need to stay away from donating to private groups.
Commissioners will not donate, I'll make sure.
I don't mean.
It's a rule.
I mean.
That you can't violate.
As a private citizen?
Private citizens can donate, the board, you cannot donate any funds, so if we wanted to do a project like this, we would literally have a contract that says, we're putting this money toward the Geo Gold project or whatever, it is something along those lines, but it will not be a donation.
You mean from this group?
Mm-hmm, right.
Can I personally donate?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. No.
Personal.
Can't use county money to do it.
Right, but should I ask as my title?
Sure, just, uh, all you, just gotta make sure that, that you write has your signature on it and that.
No.
Uh, I understand. Did you want to add anything about the, I see you came in a little late about the corrections video surveillance system? No?
My foretaste.
Okay, well, good then, let's go on to Board of Commissioners' term goals discussion, item A, job description status.
Uh, the two status, uh, items that I have here, I just, uh, to update you on where these are, these are, are gonna continue to happen, and then we have to. Uh, some of our, um, uh, policies are still out of date, you can see some of those are still dated in the nineties. Uh, things like the civil rights and equal employment, uh, policies, I really need to take a look at, because there have been changes and, and so on, so. You know, those things are gonna be ongoing, the job descriptions, you can see where we are, there is a group of job descriptions for the clerk's office that are currently under review. Uh, we have had, uh, indications from the transit director of his pending retirement, so that one kind of is going to the top of the list too, so that the committee will have that to work with, but those things are gonna continue to happen. Uh, what I'm really interested in are other items that, um, this board would like to see, uh, move to the top of the list. And we are gonna review the, finally, the draft, uh, personnel manual here later today with that committee. Uh, so that, that's a project that was discussed the last time we had this conversation, about a couple of years ago. Also, just in terms of timing on this, I, I've qualified this by saying term goals, so meaning for the entire term of the board. And we don't necessarily need to do this again next year, because you're all still gonna be commissioners next year. So this can be a, a two-year program, if you will, starting January one, but things that you would like to see accomplished in your term, and that's very helpful to me, and to other departments, is they start to prioritize the projects they work on, so if it's important to the board, let me go to the top of the list.
When would you like us by?
Yep, January last three months ago would have been great, but, uh, no, I just, really, this is, in fact, this is a very fluid list, so once we get a, a list of priorities, and something happens in August, and you want to move that to the top of the list, you can change that. So it's, it's really at your pace, for lack of another word, and what I could do, when I send out the revised project list for the ARPA projects, is just create a, you know, very basic form that says, what are your priorities as a commissioner? We can list those, and then maybe in a later Cal meeting, kind of compile those and look at them and do what we want to do.
Okay, anything else on that? So item B, policies and procedures status, oh, just go ahead, Commissioner Simmons, I'm sorry.
You said you're talking about, um, ja- job descriptions and the one, ones in a review, clerks, for the clerk's office, who's reviewing that?
Well, it starts with the clerk, uh, putting the, the basic, uh, you know, daily tasks and things for each of the departments to do, she'll have him review it with me, and because, uh, all but one of the, positions in that office are part of the steel workers, will actually touch base with the steel workers as well, but look at those now. Steel workers don't get a veto on it, but my experience has been, you might recall this, when we did the custodian job descriptions, they caught a few things, very important things, that were then incorporated into that job description, so it's a very valuable review for us. When that's completed, then we bring it to committee, the whole meeting for the board to review, and that, will tell you that it's ready for your review at that point, that the others have had their input. And again, that's not meaning that you as a board have to rubber stamp it, you do not, you can look at those and, and make modifications and do what you need to do. Um, we will obviously be there to help, uh, with that conversation, there are, uh, some statutory requirements, for instance, that the clerk has to meet. If you move to remove one of those statutory requirements, we will red flag that for you immediately and say, well, if you do that, then we're out of compliance with, and can, can let you know, and I doubt that you would do that, but if we start encroaching in that area, we'll be there to help, um, you know, bring you back to that right side of the, the ledger.
So we're doing these job descriptions now, a lot of people have been here, for a long time, I mean, excuse me, would those job, are these job descriptions gonna change significantly?
And no, it's really just to get finally a job description in place, um, you know, when we ever, uh, you know, get into a, a conversation about what am I supposed to do if the employee doesn't have a job description, you know, as a guide, they, they really look to, to their own devices. And so this helps focus, you know, the attention of the day-to-day operation.
I, I have a couple of comments in job descriptions, and, and this is just me personally, because, um, um, I think like, um, person who, who goes to the window, a person who answers the phone, a person who, whatever, you know, that's not, that's not part of a job description, because if the phone rings, whoever's available is gonna answer that phone, doesn't mean you answer it first, you answer it second, you answer it third, and you, we gotta look around the room to see who was there to go and answer that phone, you know, if somebody's busy, somebody answers the phone, you know, it's not a certain person.
So there's.
Does that make sense to you?
There's a, there's a line that goes in all of these job descriptions that says, and other duties as assigned, and then the department head can say, when the phone rings, answer it.
I know, and, and I understand that, but not a one individual person, the phones ring, you're the one that has to answer that phone. You know, I could be in there eating lunch, or I could be in there sorting files or whatever, and somebody else, you're sitting doing nothing, and they should answer the phone. So I don't think anyone should be designated per se, just to answer the phone.
I don't know that any of them have so far, but we'll be sensitive to that.
Okay.
I don't think we disagree at all.
And I'm talking about just everyday little, little things like that, you know, like everybody's busy, then you go to the window. Well, you used to go to the window a lot when people were, Karen, when, when people were busy.
Yes.
When you were in the clerk's office.
Absolutely.
And that, you know, wasn't on anybody's job description.
We all did it.
You all did it.
It's called being a team player.
That's right.
There's work to do, do it.
And, but, and, and that's true, and that's like with every office, you know, I would think they'd all work as, as a team. So when one person's gone, the office continues to flow as normal, like that person was still there, really, just a thought.
The only, the only exception to that is, is like, uh, Prec is an elected official, Karen's elected official, Denise Ladonna. They can, they have the authority to, to change that and specifically put somebody, but the job description, yes, they do, because they're elected.
I understand that.
Okay, they, they have that authority, I'm saying they don't have to use it, but they can if they want to.
I call that micromanaging.
I do too, I do too, and I don't like it. I just want to let you know that they have the authority to do so.
Sorry.
That's the only thing, the job description at our level is gonna be broad, and it's gonna be able to just, just be able to answer the phone, that everybody answer the phone. But the point is, those particular offices have, have the authority to make particular job assignments.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I think it would be really tough to work in an office that's micromanaged.
Oh, I, I agree, I agree.
Would drive me nuts.
Job descriptions are, are fairly broad in, in the aspect that you're talking about, in, in my opinion, um, that's not, in a job description.
Okay. Bringing out a plane.
Right, and that's all I am too, and I'm, and, and what I'm saying is, like, Tim says, it starts at the department, and that's great. Because, you know, we've, we've put resolutions through, and certain departments here do not, do not, uh, uh, have not accepted our resolutions. Well, like time cards, we just talked about it two days ago. The sheriff, we, we put together a time card.
They're just not utilizing them, they're not utilizing the resolution.
We put together in a resolution to, to use the system in its entirety, the sheriff has not. He's just not doing it, okay, and that's because he can say that.
Yes, he can.
It's just like the nepotism po- policy, we have that in place in the county, he is not accepted in his department.
But that protects with us having that resolution.
Oh, it protects us.
Our job is to protect the county and that.
Right, it protects us, but the, my point is, when it's an elected official, they're elected by the people, they answer to the people that voted for them, not us, we're not their boss.
Correct, but we control our budget.
Yes, we do, yes.
We do.
Yes, we do.
Our budget.
So, maybe you might want to think about that. Might want to think about that when you see a surveillance system that they'd like to buy. You might consider, uh.
Or a millage, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, item B, policies and procedures status, we kind of already talked about that, right?
Yep, same, same thing, it's just an update for you to see where we are.
Item, Commissioner, Commissioner discussion, is there anything?
People doing that.
Hey, so is there anything else, Commissioner Simmons, go ahead, you have.
This is a little upscale, but, uh, you, uh, Commissioner, um, David and I are on Personnel Committee, right?
Correct.
Okay, this is what I like to see happen, uh, since we are in Personnel, we should know what's going on with Personnel, uh, the two of us. If there's any grievances, and there's any issues that come up, if Timmy sees anything, we need to know about that and have a copy of that too. The Personnel Committee, you or I, need to have a, need to have a copy of that, so we know what's going on, within the county, within this, within transit, with whatever, so there, there's some, um, big issues. I think Personnel needs to know about that.
We have a meeting after this, our first meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We do, just a thought.
Agreed.
I'll be quiet.
Nope, I, that's, go ahead, Commissioner Mayhew, do you have any discussion, anything that pops into your head right now, please bring it to us.
I got a question for Roger, Roger. Commissioner Mayhew, yes, uh, how is this format, are you being like here every, everything, okay?
Pretty good.
Okay, do you like this a little better for discussion-wise?
The roundtable, the feeling versus.
Versus up there?
It don't matter to me, I'm not used to either one.
Okay.
And that, can, does it help, can you hear better with it, or do you, no difference?
No, once they shut that thing down, I don't hear too bad.
I've had a lot of people come to me that have been here in our meeting and say, complain about that, especially in the back, back here. Uh, Mr. Loria does every single meeting, like you need to fix your boiler system, he cannot hear any of the meeting, until whatever shuts. Until whatever shuts down, huh?
Two noises is bad. If you take that and, and fill them chairs. I'm just sitting in the dark.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
But you're not the only one to complain about the, I, I'm assuming it's the boiler system or something that.
Air handler, something's up there, it's just rumbling and grumbling.
Yes, yes, I heard that many times.
So we shut that off for our meeting, is that what?
That's good, that'd be good.
Good.
Mr. Monty?
Um, are we gonna set like a, a timeframe when we're gonna revisit for these ARPA, ARPA funds?
We can, remember, there is no, there is no timeframe.
I understand that, there's no deadline to spend the money, but I think we need to stay consistent. We have the money, and if we stay consistent on working on where we all feel it should go, I'd like to see that we. You know, sooner than later, make some decisions.
This is a committee as whole, if, if the commissioner would like to put it on the agenda for the next voting meeting. He should be able to do so, right?
Absolutely, but. Next week. Next week is another committee of the whole.
Next week's committee.
So, yeah.
Next week is a committee at all.
Correct.
Right, right.
So I would say two committee of the whole meetings out, not, not next one, that gives you three.
I'd like to see a month, yeah.
Well, I was saying, uh, the, the next voting meeting, which is two weeks away.
Then we need.
Our next voting meeting. Well, it could be just one item out of what we talked about instead of, I think what you're getting at is EDC. Correct?
Well, I mean, that, that's one part of it, but it's, it's a lot bigger than that, I mean, you know, it's something that's been in front of us for a while, and, you know, I think it's important that we keep the focus. And that we make some, you know, good, smart decisions here. Um, but I'd like to see a month, you know, for, four weeks or so, we could just, we can get things moving forward.
Starts with re, uh, revisiting this, especially with the new. I did, uh, meet with the senator last, last year it was, Brad, uh, Commissioner Newbecker and I went and met with the, uh. What was it, Vander, Vander?
Vander, Vanderwall.
Vanderwall.
Kurt Vanderwall.
I did meet with him, uh, personally over towards Cadillac. And the only advice he, he did give to us, we, which we briefly touched on these ARPA funds, was, uh. Once these monies are gone, he was pretty sure there wasn't gonna be anymore, and he highly encouraged these monies being spent to whatever. Whatever can save the, the county money and basically bring in any type of revenue to the county. Uh, cuz that's what's gonna help you moving forward. So he, he did have that comment for, for Mr. Newbecker today. But I would like to see this information distributed again and then reconvene. With the, with the new commissioners' opinions.
You have a deadline when you want the, the surveys back?
Give me a week.
They're gonna give you two, but, you know.
It'd be at least a week, get it to me first, you gotta, you gotta connect.
Yeah, you want at least a couple of weeks.
Oh, I'm good with a week, if I, if I procrastinate, that's all bad.
Well, you've already seen it one time, they have.
But I haven't seen it simplified and, and some things taken off of there, it's gonna be just like fresh eyes looking at it all over again. In my opinion, I, I have a different perspective now.
I'm fine with a week.
Mr. David, are you talking about the ARPA priorities right now?
Who is updated?
We have to have it so we can prioritize.
So we said, he wanted to know how long, once they, they give this list to us, how long to return it, and I said a week should give us adequate time, do you agree with that?
Once, once we get it, but thanks then, we can talk about it, pretty as a whole on the twentieth.
That's what we just, yes, agreed to, if, if it's return in time, anywhere's from, from three weeks out to a month. Is that okay?
In a month, it'll be a voting, so we need to have it in three weeks.
Okay, that's your, that's your place, yes.
And that prioritizing for that.
Yep.
I talked to Tim, I've been online, I know Google, but. They wanna scan her over to jail, about a scanner.
Mm-hmm.
And a whole lot of the other places are using opioid money to get them.
Oh, yep.
And we need one, it's on that list. I don't know why we don't take that money and get that.
We also, Tim, by looking at, you brought up a, a great point, by looking at this list, could, could you also put next to it somehow what you think could be utilized from opioid, or opioid funds? Which also maybe the video surveillance cameras could be, I, I mean, I don't know.
That's a great idea.
Which you're setting up a whole committee, another, another.
But it'd be nice to take this, put less, some pressure off of us.
Yeah.
By looking at this and, and.
But don't, don't sidestep your next committee for the opioids.
What do you mean by sidestep?
Well, you, you wanted to have a thirteen-member committee or something for the opioid?
Or I think.
No, there was a list, there was a list of, of.
Yeah.
I said reduce it to seven, you guys wanted to keep it at thirteen.
Can, can we get an update of where we're at with that, or?
What we did, um, based on the prior conversations was, uh, sent notices out to, you know, various people who are. Dealing with opioid issues, at least in our minds, and ask about interest. And, you know, nobody said they're not interested, but the response has not been overwhelming either, but there, there have been a couple, uh, so. Next steps might be to formally establish the committee, and then honestly, uh, to really get good members, a lot of times you have to go out and recruit. So if you know somebody who's, you know, in the area that, that's dealing with this, um, you know, knock on their door, give them a call.
Am I not mistaken, we did not come up with a number yet, we wanted to verify who sent, sent, sent the information out, see who is interested in wait for that information before we make a decision?
That's, that's exactly right.
Okay. But it'd be nice by you looking at this list, by, by making a, a possible determination of we, you. For what you know of these funds, what we could possibly utilize those for.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean they will, but you look at, take some pressure off of us.
Right.
I feel.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on Commissioner Mayhew's comment of bringing up for like the, the machine over at the jail. You know, again, something that we need to stay consistent, steady on, you know, right now we have ten, three hundred and some thousand dollars sitting in the bank from opioid money. You know, and that money should be used wisely, and, you know, we need to make these decisions, but we do know that we're, you know, we've got quite a liability over at the jail. Um, and this machine would do great benefits, uh, to help reduce that liability. Uh, so we have the money, we need to stay steady and make some decisions. Um, I like the idea of this committee, I, I asked that I could be on the committee, I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but I just think we need to just make sure we're staying steady and moving these things forward. Three hundred thousand dollars sitting there, we have some items that really could use, and we could use them immediately, we need to make some, some smart decisions sooner than later.
We gotta get the committee, committee moving first and then make. Anything else? Hey, I think, uh, we have, are we guys good with public comment? Prioritization, and we pretty much just covered that.
Right.
Okay, I wanna make sure I don't miss anything, public comment, is there any public comment in the room? Anything?
Anything.
Lots of comments.
Okay, perfect, any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Ten twenty-seven, all in favor, say yes.
Yeah.
Posed.
Good day, everyone.
You too.